We are live now. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Agata. And somebody gonna share our slide deck? Perfect. So we are at three oh four. So I will go ahead and call the December second, two thousand twenty one Audit and Finance Committee meeting to order. And with that, just a quick notice of a live stream. So a reminder that the meeting is being recorded and it's being livestreamed on YouTube for the public's viewing. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic, committee members are each in their respective homes or places of work for the duration of this recording. Thank you to those who have joined us today and to the members of public watching our live stream or later the recording of this meeting. Before we begin, like to provide our land acknowledgement on behalf of the Audit Finance Committee. We would like to acknowledge the traditional land in which we're virtually gathered today's treaty six territory. We would like to thank the diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors footsteps have marked this territory for centuries, such as the Cree, Dene, Salto, Dakota Sioux, and Blackfoot peoples. We also acknowledge this is the Metis homeland and the home of the largest concentration of Inuit south of the sixtieth parallel. It is a welcoming place for all peoples who come from around the world to share the Edmonton metropolitan region as home. So we have a revised agenda in front of us to what was originally distributed a few days prior to the meeting here. Mr. Jankowski, can you just quickly highlight the changes for the members and the members of the public?
So there are no changes to the agenda. The the word, the item of the orders that you see in front of you is the entirety of the agenda that we're proposing to speak to today.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So everybody should have a copy of that agenda. So I will look for a motion to adopt that agenda.
I'll move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. And we'll call the question all in favor.
We'll do that.
Perfect. So that is carried. Thank you very much. And with that, then we will move on to item number three, an update on the EMTSC financials, and I will turn that over to administration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This has become our regular practice now at the Audit Finance Committee. What we simply have prepared for you today is just a further update on some of the information that you saw in terms of comparing actuals to budget. You saw this information when we prepared and presented the draft proposed twenty twenty two operating budget. You saw a similar graph. The the numbers that you see here now are the numbers that are reflective of the November actuals and as well as our projection to the end of the year. The bottom line number of a positive variance of one point two nine one is very similar to what we had as part of the budget presentation. It is about twelve thousand dollars different. In fact, we're we're about twelve thousand. We're projecting to be about twelve thousand dollars more underspent if I can put it that way. But as I indicated through the original presentation last week, and as will be referenced again in the follow up presentation to the next item, the item of the proposed budget. This money, this unspent, these unspent funds for twenty twenty one are simply being pushed over into twenty twenty two in order to allow us to undertake the activities that we had proposed in the twenty twenty two work plan. So with that, that concludes the the remarks on the comparison of actuals to budget.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Jankowski, and I will look for any questions from the Audit and Finance Committee members on the financial update. Excellent. Seeing none, then I will look for the motion as displayed on the screen. Mr. Finstead, go ahead.
Thank you. I move the Audit and Finance Committee accept material in the discussion as presented during the update on EMTSC financials as information.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion on that matter?
None from here.
Perfect. Seeing none, we'll call that question. All those in favor. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. On to item number four, the consideration of proposed twenty twenty two operating capital budget and the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four outlook. Mr. Jankowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm very happy to present today the kind of the adjusted budget presentation that reflects the input that the overall board provided both in open session and in closed session last week during the tabling of the proposed operating capital budget and then the tabling of the post twenty twenty three, twenty four outlook that took place at the organizational meeting. What staff prepared, you see in your package before you in the agenda package, a final proposed budget document which marries both the cost side of the ledger for twenty twenty two along with the funding discussion for twenty twenty two. And today I simply have a short recap of the presentation that Lori spoke to yes, la- last week at the organizational meeting. Just to provide a few of the highlights of the budget that we have put forward for committees consideration and hopefully approve approval and and direction or recommendation of the budget to the board for its meeting of December sixteenth. As we indicated, there are two significant focus areas, main focus areas for twenty twenty two, and these were reflected in the proposed work plan that the board approved last week. The activities are grouped into generally these two buckets or these two groups of activities. One, all of the activities relating to standing up the can can commission in advance of the opening day or start of operations, bus operations day. And the second is the definition of what opening day service would look like and the negotiation and execution of all the service delivery agreements with the current owners of the various transit systems. There is a modest ask capital ask of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as well for the continued cost of outfitting the new office location. Moving to the next slide. These, this was the budget overview that we shared last week, and I'll speak to this in a little more detail throughout the next few slides, but essentially what we're highlighting is that the three year cost of standing up the commission is now projected to be about six point three seven four million dollars, which is about five, five point eight percent higher than the costs that were originally envisioned in the business case. And as we've indicated through numerous discussions, all of the startup costs of the commission are to be debt financed and ultimately recovered from either fair box revenues nor non fair box revenues, potentially grant funding from other sources of government, other sources of revenue, or ultimately the contributions of the eight member municipalities. But those costs, those recoveries would particularly the latter category, those would take place only in the year, starting in the year of service delivery, which at this point we anticipate to be in twenty twenty three. And what we, what we expect is that throughout twenty twenty two, we will be working with all of the current owners of the various transit systems. We will be developing a fully costed plan for delivery that we expect on opening day, and we will be preparing a much more detailed and robust operating budget for presentation to this committee and to the board over the course of twenty twenty two for that twenty twenty three operational start. Our outlook for twenty three and twenty four therefore today only reflects the continuation of the recurring incremental costs of starting this commission. Moving on to slide number four. These are the recommendations that were were including in the budget. This is the sum total. This is the slide that will be repeated at the end of my presentation today. What we're seeking is a recommendation from this committee for a proposed twenty twenty two operating budget of three point six four three million dollars and a proposed capital budget of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I will skip through the next slide because I think we've spent quite a bit of time on this already. That slide being the the twenty twenty one year end forecast. I won't bother going through slide seven in in detail, but looking at the twenty twenty two work plan on slide eight. What what I've already spoken to are the two categories of costs, and these are simply the the additional, the additional major components of those costs. The costs that we propose for continuing to stand up the commission include in general the onboarding of new staff and the opening of the new office. Whereas the the contracted services for the activities such as the strategic planning, the proposed governance review and the very significant comparative analysis, which will help us identify and recommend to the board what opening day service would look like with public engagement components, transit operations, detailed service planning, in other words, and the analytics behind that, as well as the financial analytics. Those are the major categories of work that have been worked into the twenty twenty two budget. On slide number nine, we have the categories that the board has become accustomed to over the course of the last two years in terms of looking at the costs of standing up the commission one time startup costs in the top half of the page. And then the 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 years proposed recurring incremental costs. So these are the costs of staff that have been retained to start up the commission, which would be expected to continue in subsequent years and really be included in the base operating budget from next year on. And you can see when we add the eight hundred and seventy four thousand dollars that are proposed in one time startup costs for the year as well as the two point seven six nine million dollars in terms of the the single year of recurring incremental costs. They add up to the three point six four three million that I referenced in one of the opening slides. The next slide, slide number ten, simply takes those costs and redistributes them or shows them in a way that I think most municipal councils are familiar to seeing them. These would be, this would be a similar representation to what you would see with regards to a municipality's operating costs being shown and being depicted in this way. Total wages and benefits of about two point two million dollars with the other categories reflecting categories similar to what you would see in your annual budget preparate presentations in in your municipal, local municipalities. The highlights associated with that were presented in the earlier discussion in the organizational meeting. The the, we provided more detail at that time, and certainly you can find the detail in the attachment to your decision note. The proposed document that that we have compiled for the totality of the twenty twenty two proposed budget. The capital details on the next page simply relate to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is being asked for in order to outfit the office. The pieces that are new to the presentation that are that are different in this presentation from the presentation that was shared in open session last week is the discussion around funding and in reflection of the guidance that the board has provided. We have now put together the total costs and estimated the total costs, as I said, for the the three years to be six point three seven nine million dollars. And while the province has provided the commission with the authority to borrow up to a maximum of seven million dollars to finance the operational costs. There is a question of how we're going to actually secure the the seven million dollars or the the amount that exceeds the current five million dollar debt limit that both the the committee or the the board has put in place kind of a self cap as well as the limit of our current line of credit with the TD Bank. And so moving forward in on on slide thirteen, what we've highlighted is that thirteen, I think, if I can push back to thirteen, there we go. Is that over the course of the next few months, and in fact, this work has already started. There is a meeting being set up right now with the provincial ministry of transportation grant funding officials to discuss how we might be able to get additional, whether we'd be able to get additional funding to help offset some of those single year or three year startup costs that that we need to incur. We will also be undertaking to meet with, along with the municipal representatives, meet with our federal counterparts to see if there are federal funding opportunities that we might be able to tie into. So a lot of advocacy work is taking place, but at the same time, what we envision is that we're going to have to debt finance at least for the the beginning of the year. We're going to have to debt finance the additional amount over five million dollars to to accommodate the three year six point four million dollar cost. Moving on then, the, just to summarize on slide sixteen. The proposed twenty twenty two operating budget will allow us to continue to stand up the organization build towards the opening day service by defining and getting board approval for what that would look like, negotiating the service delivery agreements and transition the service delivery from the municipal owners, current municipal owners to the commission for delivery under a regional model in twenty twenty three. The, I said I was going to come back to the slide earlier. The total amount that we are proposing then for the board for the committee and ultimately for the board's approval is an operating budget of three point six four three million as well as the proposed twenty three, twenty four outlook, which represents the continuation of those ongoing incur, the repetitive incurred incremental costs as well as the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital budget for twenty twenty two. And at this point, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions, and I know Lori Shay Smith is here as well. Will be happy to answer anything else that might might come up.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Jankowski. And just before we get to questions, I did just want to recognize we've had a new guest join their meeting. So Tony Kibisky is the C A O for the town of Devon. So we know unfortunately, AmeriCrotic is unable to join us today. But it's nice to have Tony here as an observer. So thank you very much for joining into the meeting. With that, I will move on to questions and Mr. Finstead, I see you have your hand raised. So please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. More of a comment than a a question, but I really appreciate the efforts taken to secure potential funding from other levels of government while still recognizing the need that we may have to rely on debt financing. So appreciate those efforts, which to me indicates that we won't be going into this with a a budget that isn't properly allotted for. So thank you for those extra steps.
So thank you, Mr. Finnstead. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Houston?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Jankowski. Mr. Jankowski, you talked about looking, seeking other funding sources from other levels of government. Do we need to do some advocacy from the municipalities to have a joint letter go into the government to support the efforts that you're using? Would that be helpful? Your thoughts?
Absolutely. So this this board has actually overseen prior to the municipal election. It it took the action of writing to each one of the the federal parties after the recent federal election, which resulted in a minority government situation down or up in Ottawa. And this board took the step of actually sending correspondence on behalf, and it was signed by each one of the municipal representatives on the board representing the totality of the interest of all eight municipalities and all one and a half million residents of those eight municipalities. So I think there's a lot of lot to be said for the strength of the collective that is represented through an organization such as ours. The representative of not just one municipality, but an entire region such as ours. And I certainly anticipate that as we start to engage in parallel or or complementary efforts that continued solidarity of of an appeal and solidarity of indicating the importance of funding towards an effort such as this to benefit all of the residents as well as all of the businesses and assist in the economic re recovery of a region such as ours. I think that will be imperative. What we're carrying, the activities that we're engaged in now is to actually meet with some of our administrative counterparts to set the stage for the most effective or increase the the level or likelihood of success. We're seeking to identify what opportunities might exist out there or might arise in the near future out there at both the provincial and the federal level so that we can position our requests in the most appropriate way possible. And at that time, when it is time to actually advocate and seek the kind of funding that we're looking for with specifics, I think it would absolutely benefit this organization and all of its residents represented in the municipality, the member municipalities, if there was a solid solidarity of effort and a solidarity of of position, if I can call it that, that is expressed through similar sorts of resolutions by all the local municipal councils or another some other demonstration of solidarity amongst these eight municipalities. The power of the collective is certainly stronger than the power of one or two, or even of an administrative effort such as such as the one that we're undertaking now as your administration. So I I appreciate the question. I think we'll be certainly leaning on members of the board to see if there is an opportunity to appropriately express the collective desire of all eight municipalities and to convey that that need, that collective need to the other levels of government.
Great to hear. So there's been some work done, and we have some more work to do, and where we have a bit of a strategy going forward. That's great to hear. My second question relates to the the twenty twenty two onboarding costs that were in regards for debt limit. I know we've had some preliminary discussions. So I guess for the conversation today, what do we need to do in regards to increasing our self imposed debt limit of five million dollars? Or does that need to happen?
So at this point, and you might recall that what we shared last week was our calendarization of of costs over the course of twenty twenty two. That was provided in your packages as well, I believe. At this point, there is no action that's required immediately. But certainly in the first few months of twenty twenty two, we will be working with you members of the board along with the the municipalities to to take or to affect the necessary steps that we will need in order to a deal with that self imposed cap probably through a a motion which allows the organization to go beyond the five million dollars in debt funding. And secondly, to seek the security or the guarantees that would be required to back an increase in the line of credit to pay for the totality of the twenty twenty two proposed expenses. So that's work that that would would follow on in the first few months of twenty twenty two.
Okay, great. Great to hear. I just wanted to raise that for those people that are tuning in, joining in on that, because that potentially be a question. Finally, I know it's a quick ramp up for all of us. I know councillor Lori has well ingrained into the audit and finance of the transit board. But I just want to say I really appreciate the the budget that's been set forth, and I think you guys have done a lot of really good work in behind the scenes to to wrap this up for us so far. So good work behind the scenes and looking forward to you, you know, moving forward with the proposal. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Houston. And and yes, both yourself and and Mr. Finstead raised great points. I know, Mr. Jankowski, and I have had a couple of discussions about our advocacy efforts, and I know Brian's been working hard on communication strategies and and making sure that we are getting out in front of those. And so I think that is going to be a very important item for us to tackle over the coming months as we move forward in getting the commission fully operational. One thing I did want to highlight as well is in relation to the debt financing and the original business case, and I I do want to feel, I do feel it's very important to highlight that this was always the intended path of the EMTSC was to be stood up using debt financing in which was to be paid off over the first several operational years. So although we've hit a little bit of a hiccup in the road in relation to COVID and our operations not necessarily starting in September of twenty twenty two as the original business plan contemplated, I think we're still well on track and very happy to see that we're looking at creative opportunities in order to move forward. And like you said, as we move through next year, obviously, we'll have a clearer picture as to what our operational plan will look like and how the payback cycle on the original debt financing will look and what type of a term will be looked on that. So unless I see any other questions or comments from the committee members, which I am not seeing any, I believe we do have a motion, if we can get that displayed up on the screen. Are we able to get that up? There we go. Perfect. So we have the motion in front of us on the screen. I'll be looking for a mover for that, please. Mr. Houston, thank you very much. Did you want to read that in, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that the Audit and Finance Committee recommend the board approve the proposed twenty twenty two operating and capital budget and the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four outlook, the budget at the December sixteenth, twenty twenty one board meeting.
Excellent. Thank you very much. If we have any other questions, comments, or debates on the matter? Seeing none, then I will thank administration for their hard work on this, and I will call the question. All those in favor. And that is carried unanimous. Moving on to item number five, which is our in camera discussion. We will have a motion for that, and I will look for a mover at this time. Mr. Finnstead?
Yeah, I move the Audit and Finance Committee move in camera in accordance with the provisions of Division two exceptions to disclosure of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, or FOIT, or as a two thousand C F twenty five as per section sixteen through twenty eight.
Thank you very much for that. And with that, I will call that to question. All those in favor. Stu, we don't see your hand up there.
Should be up.
Okay, all right. There we go. So that is unanimous. So we will just give it a minute. I believe Agata will put us into a breakout room for our in camera session.
Yes, I will do that. Thank you.
And just looking to make sure we have everybody back. I think we do. And Agata, if you can just let me know when we are back ready to go.
We are ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we had a motion by Mr. Finstead to move out of camera, and that was carried. So we are now out of camera and arising from the in camera session. We do have a proposed motion. If we can get that up on the screen, please. And thank you very much, and I will look for a mover for that. Mr. Houston?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I will move that the Audit and Finance Committee accepts as information on the material and discussion as presented in camera and that the Audit and Finance Committee recommend to the board to approve the following. Number one, that the Edmonton Metro Transit Services Committee extend the agreement dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty one between E M T S C and Six Sense H R Resources to June thirtieth, twenty twenty two and at a cost not to exceed an additional one hundred and ten thousand dollars. And number two, that the Edmonton Metro Transit Service Committee extend the agreement dated February twenty second, twenty twenty one between E M T S C and D J Consulting to March thirty first, twenty twenty two and at an hourly rate not to exceed fifty five dollars. I guess that would be per hour. I guess that would be per hour.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Houston. Mr. Jankowski, did you have any additional commentary to this?
No, sir.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any additional comments, questions, or matters of debate from the committee members? Perfect. Seeing none, I will just again express my appreciation for the work that these consultants have done on behalf of the EMTSC to date. And I look forward to their continued participation during the times in which we need their services. So thank you very much to administration for working with them to bring this forward, to ensure that we have some continuity as we move along. With that, I will call that question. All those in favor. And I see that we have that carried unanimous. Thank you very much. And Mr. Jankowski, any further comments before we wrap up the meeting?
None. Thank you very much to all members of the committee. Thank you for particularly for the the work of recommending the budget to the December 16th meeting of the board. And thank you to Lori Shay Smith in particular for all her hard work in terms of bringing that budget forward and getting it to this point.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Again, as always, appreciate all of the work that's gone in from our administrative team. Great meeting today, and I will declare us adjourned at 3:54. Have a wonderful afternoon.
A lot. Take care.